The planning commission considered this application and recommended approval of the request subject to two conditions, those being that the property owner install a six-foot-tall wooden fence along the rear side profit lines adjacent to residential, Richard's own properties, and also if any chain link fences used on front of the property, then it must be black vinyl coated. The city staff recommended denial of this application because of its proximity to a residential district and a historic residential district in fact. Based on our concern that the uses allowed in M2 are, most of the uses that allow M2 are not appropriate adjacent to residential properties. I want to point out to you that in Georgia, you are allowed conditional zoning, so you could move forward with the M2 zoning with the conditions recommended by the planning commission, and you can also consider the conditions that would limit the use of the property to protect the adjacent properties. So we'll bring that forward to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood or staff at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the petition for rezoning application number R-17-02 as described? Yes, step four, state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Solvin. I own the property, CK Properties. I bought the property in 2005. I had to rezonate that time, and economy went south, so at the time, I was planning on putting some office warehouses there. But it didn't happen. I have a fire with this property that I'm getting done in M2. It's nice all around it. You'll find it look good on the backside. On one side of this place, the property is a vacant house, and then it passed away, and you got Davis Oldman, and Bedford Oldman in front of it. And on the backside, Tommy Long, and Miss Bishop, they're husband and child, but I like that consideration.
All right. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak for this petition for rezoning? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning application Thank you. Counsel, we're still in a public hearing. Item 6B, this is an amendment to the Period Land Development Ordinance, Section 106-Signs, to reflect the new form-based code, excuse me, to reflect the new form-based code districts on General Corby Highness Boulevard. Mr. Wood.
Mayor and counsel, this request is to correct an other site in which the districts in the new form-based code did not have reference to their sign standards. But we are recommending, and the planning commission also recommended, that the interstate mixed-use district and the mixed-use center district be categorized similarly to the C1, C2, M1, M2 district sign standards, and that the neighborhood mixed-use district be categorized similar to the CP, LC, OC, IN districts currently under ordinance, and that the interstate mixed-use and mixed-use center also allow what type of signs they want to, the C1, C2, and M2 districts. The planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood or staff at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this amendment to the Period Land Development Ordinance, Section 106-Signs, as described? Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this amendment to the Period Land Development Ordinance, Section 106-Signs, as described? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item 7 is a review of minutes. Counsel, for your consideration, item 7A are the minutes, you have been provided the minutes of the March 6, 2017 work session, the March 7, 2017 pre-council meeting, and the March 7, 2017 council meeting. Please note that Councilmember Jones was absent from the March 6, 2017 work session. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Are there any additions, changes, or additions for discussion concerning these minutes at this time? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your hand. All is opposed, please raise your hand. Any objections? Please let the record note that Mr. Jones is abstaining because of his absence from the March 6, 2017 work session. The motion passes. I have made his own business. I have made A or ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item 8A1, counsel, this is the second reading of an ordinance, deannexing P-49-41/42 from the City of Perry. This property is located at 2000 and 2008, House and Lake Grove. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. The applicant requested deannexation based on his thought that the city do not provide services, they do not have a sewer line in the area, we can't provide water service. The planning commission recommended denial of the deannexation.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, this is the second reading, and it is time for adoption. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding your preference on this.
Sir, can I see?
No, sir, you cannot. We've already had a public hearing on it, and it's time for us to take action.
But in lieu of Mr. Wood's statement, I'd like to add more facts.
I understand that, sir, but this is not the appropriate time for it, and it's time for us to take action. Thank you.
But Mr. Wood stated an incorrect, I was told that I could not have water three separate times. It wasn't, he said that I was misunderstood, I misunderstood, I was told.
I understand, but this is not the appropriate time for you to interject into this proceeding. Thank you.
So when do I get to read here?
You can address Mr. Wood outside of this meeting, you can go back to planning and zoning, or you can address us later on in the meeting where we have public comments. But we're going to take action at this time. Counsel, this is an ordinance for the second reading and adoption. At this time, I will entertain a motion that tells us your preference concerning this action.
I make a motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendation to deny the deannexation of this property.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand.
Item 9. Yeah?
I'm sorry, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item 8A2 is the second reading of an ordinance that rezones P-49-41/42 from the City of Perry R-2A, two-family residential district to City of Perry R-AG, residential agricultural. The property is located at 2000 and 2008, House and Lake Grove. Mr. Wood.
This request, we go before the planning commission, they recommended approval of the zoning. The RAG would reduce the density allowed on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, this is an ordinance for the second reading, and it is time for adoption. At this time, I will entertain a motion concerning your preference regarding this particular ordinance rezoning request.
Make motion to approve the petition.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Like.
Your second, I guess.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9, is any other old business? Item 9A, is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item 9B, is any other old business from council members? Is item 9?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Item 9C, is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And item 9D, is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Holbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 is new business. Item 10A is matters referred from the March 20, 2017 work session and the March 21, 2017 pre-council meeting. Item 10A1, counsel, this is a resolution that establishes a policy relative to use of chain link fencing in certain land use districts. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, following up on your work session and then discussion that you had pre-council, you have a resolution establishing a policy which would allow chain link fence subject to certain conditions, and it would be allowed, these conditions would apply in non-residential districts except for the C3, which is downtown, and M1 and M2.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions concerning chain link fencing based on this recommendation? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we pass the resolution establishing the policy relative to chain link fencing as described. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A2, counsel, this is a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the funding of housing rehabilitation and reconstruction. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, you have it before you this evening for your consideration, a resolution establishing the intent of the City of Perry to prepare and submit a FY 2017 CDPG application prior to or on the April 3 deadline. You were recalled from our inspections last night, we are applying for approximately $690,000 that will go towards the rehabilitation, reconstruction, and acquisition and clearance of 16 homes in Sand Hill. Also included in the resolution is a commitment of the city up to $25,000 to assist with the clearance of the properties to be acquired. If you have any, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions of Mr. Smith and council at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution that authorizes the submission of the community development block grant application as described. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10A3 is authorization to grant specialists of Georgia Inc. to submit a community development block grant application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs on behalf of the City of Perry. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, following up on the last agenda item, what you have before you is an authorization for grant specialists of Georgia, who is a consultant that we're working with to put in together our CDPG projects, to submit the application, the FY 2017 application on behalf of the city. If you have any, answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Mr. Smith and council at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we authorize grant specialists of Georgia Inc. to submit the community development block grant application as described. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A3 is what we've already done. Item 10B are ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Item 10B1 is the first reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property from OC, office commercial to M2 industrial, a property located at 702 and 704 Wall Street. Counsel, this is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by you at this time. Item 10B2 is the first reading of an ordinance that will amend the Period Land Development Ordinance, Section 106-Signs. Again, this is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by council at this time. Item 10C are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Item 10C1, counsel, this is a resolution that declares the official intent to reimburse costs of acquiring vehicles and equipment with tax exempt financing. Ms. King.
Mayor and council, the resolution that you have before you is a resolution of the intent for the city to reimburse itself for the vehicles and equipment that would be financed through the public government res purchasing with GMA. The, this is revision, but the revision to the resolution that you all approved in July, whilst the capital projects were completed with budget. The differences are an inclusion of two police cars, police vehicles, patrol units, that it was seven, we've increased it to nine, and some substitutes after the public works, because I can go back and take a look at the equipment that was actually awarded and what was really needed for the department, which included two substituting, one tractor, or two flexing moors, and including the stormwater. Those are adjustments to that.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there a question? Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. King concerning this item at this time? Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, you've heard the request, you have the resolution before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse costs of acquiring vehicles and equipment with tax exempt financing as described. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10C2, counsel, this is a resolution accepting the maintenance of certain infrastructure of Black Hawk Phase 1, Section 3. Mr. McMurray.
Mayor and council, staff has completed inspections of Black Hawk Phase 1, Section 3. We find Phase 1, Section 3 acceptable, and we recommend acceptance at this time.
Thank you, Ms. McMurray. And are there structural issues or anything that you have found in your inspections?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. McMurray and her staff at this time?
Do you refresh our memory as to where Black Hawk actually is?
Black Hawk is a extension of Braeborn between Braeborn and Bear Branch Road to Somerset.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the explanation, but this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution accepting the maintenance of certain infrastructure at Black Hawk Phase 1, Section 3 as described. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10D is the award of bids. Item 10D1 is bid number 2017-12, St. Patrick's Drive, 12-inch water main extension. Mr. McMurray.
Mayor and council, St. Patrick's Drive, as you know, we've advertised for bids on the water main extension. We have reviewed the bids and have a recommendation of the local vendor, Leke Enterprises, of $109,511. We recommend moving forward with the low bid.
Thank you, Ms. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. McMurray and her staff at this time? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the Department of Engineers' recommendation to award the bid to the low bidder in the amount of $109,511 to Leke Enterprises of Fort Valles, Georgia, with the caveat that if this transaction is settled to our local vendor preference policy, that that would be applied about the project. There's a motion and a second. Important clarification, Mr. Holbert, will that, will that?
A code.
Important clarification for the audience. We have a local policy that if a local vendor is within 7% of a low bid, they have the preference of matching that within a certain timeframe and awarding to the local vendor. There's a question as to whether that would apply in this particular case, since this typically is done with equipment and vehicle purchases, and that's why we had the caveat added to this particular transaction. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10D2 is bid number 2017-15 for the demolition of an old animal shelter. Chief Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor and council. Earlier this year, we completed the construction of the new animal control facility, so we're at the point now that we need to raise the old building so we can complete the project. Request for bid was put out. The low bidder complied with all the requirements for the bid, is Level Line Incorporated, demolition and excavating services of Perry, and we recommend accepting their bid at $8,800.
Thank you, Chief Lynn. Does any member of council have any questions of Chief Lynn that you have at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the recommendation, you have the bids before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the Department's recommendation to award the bid in the amount of $8,800 to Level Flat Incorporated as described. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10D3 is bid number 2017-16 for the purchase of one 4x4 Prutec light duty rescue truck. Chief Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, if you remember, this was a budgeted item, it did come in under budget. The department, therefore, recommends the bid of $103,600 be awarded to the Bouts Brothers Incorporated of Smyrna, Georgia, who were the lowest bidder and met all specifications.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions of chief or staff at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the recommendation, you have the bids before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the Department's recommendation and award the bid in the amount of $103,600 to Bouts Brothers Inc. from Smyrna, Georgia as described. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. All is opposed, same side. Please let the record show that Councilmember Hunt opposes. The motion passes. Thank you. Item 10E is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Perry, House and County Board of Elections, and the House and County Board of Commissioners for the operation of the 2017 municipal election. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, with your designation of a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, we're recommending to you that you approve this. It is between the House and County Board of Elections in the City of Perry and the House and County Board of Commissioners for the operation of the 2017 municipal election. We do this every single primary of elections coming up. We recommend you, it be approved by you all, subject to the requirements the City offers.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions concerning, of Mr. Gilmore's staff concerning this particular item at this time? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement, subject to the city attorney's approval at this time. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10F, counsel, you have it before you, and it has to approve a task order number 28 for the stormwater asset mapping phase 2 project. Mr. McMurray.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the city has a request of proposal from a Constantine Engineering for Professional Services of Stormwater Asset Mapping. This is required by MS 4, and we have together these proposal costs of $58,480 from the recommendation, Chief Lynn, special.
Ms. McMurray, this is a requirement under the law that we have to be in compliance by a certain date, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
When is that date?
December 27th.
This will allow us to come into compliance assuming the professional services that will be rendered by Constantine Engineering are completed by that time, and they have time to do it?
Yes, sir. Compliance with the mapping aspect of the, of that portion, yes, correct.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. McMurray at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the request. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the task order number 28 for the stormwater asset mapping phase 2 project as described. In the amount of, in the amount of $58,480 for professional services to Constantine Engineering now. There's a second, in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10G is the request for a septic tank and a well for 2008 Highway 127. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mr. Ritchie, the owner of the property at 2008 Highway 127 has requested a well and a septic system for the property there. The city is not able to provide sewer service, so we would recommend that we allow a septic system to be constructed in the city limits. This will be subject to permitting by House and County. With regard to the well, the city will provide water service to the property, but the applicant requesting a well there which would be used for both irrigation for the farming aspect of the property as well as the commercial building located there. He is aware of the flow requirement necessary for fire protection on that property.
Very good. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the request for a septic tank and a well for 2008 Highway 127. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the request for the septic tank and well for 2008 Highway 127 as described. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11, Mr. Gilmore, is anything further under item 10 that we need to address at this time?
Yes, sir.
Item 11, a council member items. Is item 9?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Holbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 12, a department head items. We'll start with the Department of Economic Development. Mr. Smith.
I do have a couple of items, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to share. Mayor and council, general public, a couple of exciting items coming out of the Perry Housing Team next month. First, we are going to be having our first ever City of Perry Housing Fair. The housing fair will take place on April 27th, it's a Thursday, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it will be a Creekwood Park Pavilion. If there's inclement weather, it will be moved to the Perry Art Center. We have a lot of resources coming from all over the state. If you're looking to buy a home in Perry, if you're looking to make improvements to your home, that type of thing, we encourage you to attend. It's welcome, everyone's welcome, it's a free event, and there will be prizes. Should be, should be an excellent event.
What's that date, Robert?
April 27th.
Thank you.
From 3 to 6. And then following, a couple of days later, we are going to be having our Spring Neighborhood Cleanup Day. The Neighborhood Cleanup Day this year, or this spring, will be in Akla Hachi, and we will be meeting at Barbara Calvin Park, which is off Tucker Road, at approximately 8:30 that morning, it's a Saturday morning, and we'll be working our way to the neighborhoods and then following everything up. Following up with that, we're going to be having a cookout, hamburgers and hot dogs, that type of thing. We usually have very good attendance at these, hope it's nice weather. It's always, again, a good event. Oh, the date, again, April 29th, it's a Saturday, 8:30 o'clock in the morning, 8:30 a.m. in the morning. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. From the Department of Labor Services, Mr. Vann.
I don't know if there's a.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Nothing, sir.
From the Department of Financial Administration, Ms. King.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us? From the Reporting Secretaries, Division 1. And from Public Works, Mr. Schell.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer, for the night up at the front table, do you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, counsel. Item 13, the general public items. Does any member of the general public wish to address counsel at any item at this time?
Is that my turn?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
So I'm Richie. I live in 201, William B. Evans Court, Poughkeepsie, Georgia. So I'll come up to kind of appeal to the mayor and counsel for, really, I wanted to get you guys to think a little bit about the rezoning and reanimation that I'd said. This is just a picture of aerial view of where we're putting the barn and what we're looking to do. And I'm printed, because I wanted you to realize that this is not like the Dollar General that we're trying to put in.
This is not what you're talking about?
The Dollar General. It's not a, you know, Walmart. I'm not trying to build this big, huge commercial thing. We're really, it started out as a barn, and we talked about it a little bit last time, and then we went to city council, we're planning, and said, hey, we think we want to do a little bit more with it. We'd like to make some brides happy. We've got daughters we'd like to make happy. So we went down this path of putting in the barn and using it for an event venue. And part of, part of the path we went down was with the help of planning and zoning, because they're like, okay, to fit in this, you have to get rezoned for that. You have to get a exemption for this, and so we kind of just went down the path that we were led by planning and zoning. It seems like, it's gotten harder and harder, and I'm not really sure why. The last meeting we were here, that's when they threw the parking lot, and then later they need for a fire hydrant, and then a road. It's, I got some estimates, and it's going to cost us 20,000 dollars to run the water to the property line, and it's going to cost me 30,000 dollars if I put a fire hydrant in for the barn. I got Gary Martin to give me the cost of the road that they're asking for, and it's going to be between 16,000 and 80,000 dollars. As you can see, gentlemen, it's a barn in the middle of a field, and part of the whole setting is to have it where it looks like a barn in the middle of a field. It's not supposed to be a developed area. We took it out of R2 in agriculture because the plan is to use it as a barn, and a farm, and do stuff, and have some events out there. It's not, it's really gotten really expensive and really complicated. So I wanted to share with you that there are five barns in the middle of George area that do kind of the same thing. None of them have a fire hydrant or pavement road or pack roads that they go up to them. And I asked the fire marshal and the fire chief during our meeting, and they said, well, it's a state rule, and if the county chooses not to enforce it, then that's not on them, but that's not something they're going to choose not to enforce. So those costs are driven on us because we're in the city, not because of the state enforcement or anything else. So that's kind of what we're trying to do, is appeal to you guys and say, look, because we're in the city, you're driving the whole cost of the barn, and you're really kind of pushing us out of the whole idea of doing it as it's kind of a public thing. Let's make it a private barn, so that if your friends and family do it, go on in it, and that's it. We can't afford these kind of costs, and then the maintenance and all that, along the road and everything else. So that was what I was trying to say earlier before you voted, was kind of to appeal to you and go, look, it's 2,000 dollars a year if we're paying taxes. It'll take you 10 years to get back the money that it's going to cost just to pay for the water line to the property line, and not the 30, or the, yeah, 30,000 dollars that I have to pay, plus all the stuff with the roads. So that's what I was trying to get before you all vote. I really wanted to appeal to you guys and say, hey, do you really need us in the city that bad? As you can see from the picture, it's a farm field, and it's not a, it's not a parking lot, it's not a whole bunch of fancy stuff. And it was only brought into the city because the person that had it before us in 2006 was going to put a subdivision in. And I think that both of our hearings, the public spoke up and said they were glad we were putting in the barn, and they're glad we're using it for agriculture, not putting another subdivision. So I don't know how to appeal to you to be vote. I don't know how to do it, to make it all follow the rules of order, but that's what I'm here to try to do, is get you guys really, honestly, think about, does it mean that much to the city to have this, 40 acres in the city, or can we just let it go out, and let's have a little barn and do our thing, and in a couple of years, the fad goes away, we do farming, and we have. So I don't know how to do that, sir. Is there a easy way to do that, or am I just stuck and I'm done, and move on and get out of here?
No, sir, you're never stuck and done, and there's always a way. And I would encourage you to make with Mr. Wood, and he can tell you what that process is. I'm assuming you're looking in reconsideration for something?
Yeah, but you see, I've already paid. I mean, I wasn't even rezoned except they told me to come pay you 800 dollars if you could rezon. And I got to the last meeting, and you said, well, I didn't have to get rezoned. I got a exemption as R2, and all this was never, I mean, it's really kind of spiraled. And I don't know how to control it, because I'm not, I'm not that smart on rules and all that stuff. So, I don't know. Is there a way just to get a feel? Is it worth any trouble, or are you guys dead set on what you're voting on, and I'm done, and go away? What's the?
That's sort of a loaded question, Mr. Ritchie. Depending on the intent for what we propose that you want to do requires us to act a certain way based on the current zoning codes, and that's what we're reacting to. If you make a determination that it's not going to be for a public venue, and it's not, you're not going to have access for the public and all of these other things, then that's different than what, what you would ask for to begin with, from my understanding, from that standpoint. That is different, because that's not, that would not be a public venue.
Okay.
So you're changing what it is as far as the use, from what I'm hearing, and that's why I was suggesting to meet with Mr. Wood, because he has, he knows the specifics of all of that and can help you. If you, if you decide to do something different, then that's different than what we heard and what we acted on at that point.
I don't think I have a choice, sir. Like I said, I can't, I can't afford to, every time we come to a meeting, get hit with another 60,000 dollar bill. It would just, you guys might be doing it, but I can't.
I understand.
So, so what I heard you say is, if I don't make it public, then I can, I can do whatever that route takes me down.
No, sir.
But you guys will not?
What you were saying was, you need to get with Mr. Wood and to tell him if you have a change in use of the property. That changes what requirements are for you to adhere to. And I can't, I can't speak for the council. I'm just suggesting that you get with him if you have any difference now of what you want to do on the property.
I, I copy that. And then I guess, is there a way to poll the council members to say, is there a reevaluation to get out of the city, or is that done? I mean, that's the, because the city is really the one driving the regulatory enforcement.
I understand that, but it won't do any good to poll the city without us having something to vote on, from that standpoint. It is a standard policy of the city not to VNX property unless it's a headlamp or safety issue involved, from that standpoint. You can still make the argument, and we'd be glad to take that up again on that other future day, but that is, that is their standing policy.
Then, well, I'll ask you, is that like another 800 dollars, or is that?
You have to ask Mr. Wood. Is anyone else to talk to him at this time? He'll, he'll talk.
I'm saying I'll talk to you. I don't know what to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Now I can speak for me if you want.
I think we ought to have a barn.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My name is Darryl Holder. I'm a mayor and counsel. I'm the, I'm trying to purchase a property from the head of the public over on Wall Street. I heard what he said, kind of how the meeting's going my first time here, kind of in, in the world wide, and I appreciate y'all serving. My question is this, will y'all have any time between now and the next reading of this, when it sounded like it is, y'all had already made a decision, and there is no other time? Is there another, is there another meeting for me to come and talk to y'all when y'all discuss it in the sign, or do I need to tell you what I'm going to do with that property now?
Well, the use of the property falls into certain categories based on the zoning.
Correct.
And you've got latitude of depending on what that is. What we were discussing were the possibilities of that, and what planning and zoning has recommended are certain restrictions based on the projected use. To answer your question, let me back up just a little bit. The process that we have for changing in zoning codes goes to the planning and zoning first. They, they have a public hearing, and then they will, and have a recommendation to mayor and counsel. The recommendation comes to mayor and counsel, and Mr. Wood presents the recommendation, both what they have determined as well as what the staff presents. And then we go through a similar process. In one meeting, we have a public hearing, which we receive input, and then in the next meeting, we will make a determination. At the second reading and adoption, generally, the discussion's done.
Okay, so are you having another meeting between now?
No, we will not. If there's something that you wish, that we don't know, based on what the record is in Mr. Wood, we had to give you all of the documentation that we have from that, if you would get with him, and he will give us any additional information that is pertinent to this particular transaction that we need to know, we will consider that prior to us making the decision at our next meeting.
The only reason I asked was, I came to the women's meeting, talked to them, so here me and Mr. Kevin here talked and explained what we were thinking about, and I left there feeling like they were recommending the rezon pending two conditions that he read, but then he also added above that, things that y'all could do, which are legally allowed to do. So my question was, I would like to, if you're going to talk about all those options, it doesn't seem quite right to the public for me not to be able to be there to discuss that. Do you follow?
Yes, sir. I do.
That's, that's kind of my question, or at least that was my question, is if you're going to have another time to meet, then I would like to be able, there to be able to discuss that. Or if not, I can just tell you now kind of what I'm thinking, so that y'all do know that.
You want to work and tell us now?
Okay.
If you'd like to.
I'll tell you if, if it happens. Basically, I own the property, Catawba, that Perry Voluntary Outreach Rents now. I own that property, and I rent space from a hotelier right across the street. I run trucks and trailers, trailer business, utility trailers, electric trailers, and offhand trailers. I'm trying to purchase additional property, just like you talked about, to tend them and make it look nice for the community as a retail trailer business. So I'm just trying to clean it up, cut it down, and have nice trailers out there for a reason. That's all I'm trying to do. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Your word?
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Would anyone else like to address counsel at this time? Thank you. Item 14, our mayor items. Counsel, just for information, in the general public, tomorrow is Robbins Air Force Day at the State Capitol. Lieutenant General Levy will be addressing the House of Representatives sometime between 10:15 and 10:35. If you'd like to go here. A week from tonight, at 5:30, we will have the walk with mayor and counsel, and it will be in District Two. And we will meet where?
At Legacy Park.
At Legacy Park. That subdivision. If you would all have an interest in seeing that particular subdivision, or more importantly, having some face time with the mayor and counsel, please make sure that you show up for that. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be for a work session on April 3rd at 5:00 in this room, and our next regularly scheduled pre-council and council meeting will be on April 4th at 5:00 and 6:00. That's all I have. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything further I need to look at besides executive session? If not, counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session for purposes of real estate. There's a motion in the second.[1791.14]